Hello all, welcome to the town council meeting from February 2nd, week 21. I'm going to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. And I'll ask councillor Farino to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Divisible, liberty, justice.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, councillor Jero.
Here.
Councillor Flackhart. Councillor DiMarco.
I'm here.
Councillor Terry.
Yeah.
Councillor Honan.
Here.
Councillor Conti.
Present.
Councillor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
I'm here Denise.
Yes, yep, I see your name, yep.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of January 19th, 2020 circulated.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by councillor DiMarco. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
This is a roll call, alright. Please call the roll Denise.
Councillor Jero.
Yes.
Councillor Flackhart.
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councillor Terry.
Yes.
Councillor Honan.
Yes.
Councillor Conti.
Yes.
Councillor Farino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory. Thank you.
Okay, and under general information and recommendations, I'll just notify everybody that the council president couldn't make to the meeting tonight. He's planning on being back to full schedule next week. And he will, you know, maintain the meetings moving forward as far as the council goes. And we also have some citations that we, that the council president wanted to give out. One citation is for Michael Goldberg for his participation over the past. I think it's been a long, long time Jim, maybe, do you know how long it's been Michael served on the committee?
Mike's been here on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the past 15 years and has been a very active and well, a very active participant and we are extremely sorry to see him go.
You know, but wish him the best, obviously. Yep, so the it's the finance committee is absolutely critical to what we do. And so we'd like to recognize him for his participation on that committee, long participation on the committee. We also have a citation for, from, for Diane Wallace, who is the former director of the Winter Public Library. And I'd like to personally thank her for making such a positive contribution to the library and making it such a great environment. I know when I was using it to study there for bar exams a couple of years ago, her and her staff was great. And I know that I've heard stories after stories about how special the library is to so many families in town. So we also offer her a citation. So thank you both, Michael and Diane for that. Okay, so next thing on the agenda is a public hearing with National Grid, their representative from National Grid in the audience.
Would the person with the name of Socrates who raised their hand, are you from National Grid?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So I'm going to open up the public hearing for first for Plan 28198398 on Madison Avenue. Public hearing has been opened.
Yes, my name is Socrates Perez, my address is 170 Metrus Street in Molden. I'm here representing National Grid to petition a portion of conduit from hold on, just give me one second to find that pole number. So it will be pole 1320 in Madison Ave. It's basically about seven feet of conduit from that pole into house or building number 30 in Madison Ave. It will be one, one four, two four inch conduits.
Okay. Does anyone from the council have any questions?
I'd like to hear from the DPW director, please.
Okay, I'll recognize councillor, Director Cal.
Yes, good evening. So I got a couple of questions on this petition. The first one is whether or not the, that existing pole is being reused? Or this project is gonna create another double pole situation?
That, that pole will be replaced, but there will be, there will be no double poles on that one.
So i- in the past, every time they've replaced a pole, they have, they've created a double pole. So everything will be removed and that pole will be removed before this new pole gets installed?
No, it has to go through a process. So we go first and we replace the pole. But then all those utilities will need to transfer to the new one.
Right, and this process unfortunately, you know, history shows us that these double poles, this process is not a, a quick process. I mean, we have double poles throughout town that are now going on close to 10 years old. And it seems like every new double pole, we, every double pole that gets removed, we get three or four new ones. So is there any commitment to how quickly this double pole situation goes away?
Like I said, we, we always maintain our commitment to transfer all our equipments. But I cannot say anything about the, the other utilities.
Okay, the second question I got for you on this particular petition is, is it just a sidewalk panel that gets, needs to be opened up to, to install your conduit? Or is there any other street openings tied to this project?
No, it is just a sidewalk.
And then the 240 feet is all on private property, the trench?
Yes.
Okay, and I just, if the council chooses to, to vote in favor for this, I would just tell you that we do expect a cement panel to be restored and not an asphalt panel on the sidewalk?
Okay.
That's all I have for this petition. Thank you.
Councillor Vice President.
Yes.
Um, I would respectfully request that this gets moved to committee. The double pole issue is something that's concerning to me about just after the municipal modernization bill passed a couple of years ago. We're not really supposed to be entertaining double poles and there's active, there was legislation concerning the reduction of double poles across the Commonwealth. I would like the opportunity to have this brought up in one of the subcommittees to have further discussion on, if at all possible.
Okay, so we'll take that up under new business. And I will most likely unless the council has a, an objection, send that to the Public Safety Committee. Is there anybody else from the council who has any question or any questions for the representative? Okay, seeing none, we will close that public hearing. And now I will move on in the agenda to Plan Number 29672409 on Boden Street. I will open up the public hearing for that petition. Would anybody like to speak on?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, Socrates again, so for, for this project. Just give me one second, sorry. So for this project, we are petitioning for a pole 1311-50 for reliability purposes. We need to install a re-closer and all the poles are already being used but with other equipments. And we are requesting permission to put another pole midspan near 178 Boden Street in Winter.
Okay, are there any questions from the committee, from the council, Director Cal?
So again, I guess my, my question is, so right now you have poles there that are separated by 95 feet. And to me, it looks like there is some room on those poles. I don't know the size of the equipment. And that's another, the size of the equipment is never really in your, your project descriptions. So you'll be having, by putting this third pole in there, you'll have 47 feet separation between those two existing poles. It, it just seems to me like it's going to be crowded. Especially in, I understand it's adjacent to a cemetery, but it is also a residential area. And if there's any way that that equipment can be accommodated on an existing pole, I think that would certainly be my desire. I don't want to speak to the council, but I, I gotta think that it would be, make the most sense to not have to install a, a new pole if we can accommodate the equipment on an existing pole.
Okay, does anyone else from the council, councillor Lutery?
Thanks councillor Vice President. And just to piggyback on what Director Cal is saying. I, I'm sure that we've, we have contacted people, or have we contacted people? Butters and people that understood, they understand that there would be a new pole placed in front of whoever's house it happens to be. And wondering if there's any public comment on this, either positive or negative on these, on these hearings. But you know, I, I definitely agree with, with the town manager that these, these will probably be forwarded to public safety. But it is, we appreciate National Grid coming, trying to explain it to us. But I, I still think like Director Cal has said that there seems to be, I did go by there and it seems to be room on those poles. But again, I don't know exactly what's going on there, but to crowd the streets that much more and to have poles relatively close to each other, I think is something we'd rather do without. Just as the double poles, I mean, there's well over 100 double poles in the town and it's just, it's it's becoming a hazard, I believe. But I, I understand the work has to be done. I just think we should hear more from the neighbors about it.
Okay. Anyone else from the council have any questions or comments about the project? Is it, anyone from the public have anything, any comments about the project? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on that plan. And I will move on in the agenda to Plan Number 29993191, Winter Street. So I will open up the public hearing for that. Is there anybody who would like to be heard on this proposal?
Yes, hello, Socrates again. So for this project, we are proposing two sections in Winter Street, well, yes, Winter Street is from pole 561 to an existing manhole. We need to do some trenches to install new conduits. Will be two four inch conduits approximately 100 feet from the pole, from the existing pole to existing manhole. And then there is another, another portion that we need to trench. It's between Yard Drive and Winter Street. And it will be from an existing manhole as well to a new transformer, underground transformer at 233 Winter Street. The rest is existing conduit, so we're not trenching or digging, doing nothing like that. It's just those two portions from, from Yard Drive, between Yard Drive and Winter. From an existing manhole to a new proposed transformer inside 233 Winter Street. And another portion from an existing pole 561 to an existing manhole 127. So two, the two sections that we need to trench, both of them will be 100 feet each.
Okay, great. Anyone from the council have any questions or comments about the proposal? Director Cal?
So I'm happy to see on this project, no additional poles. I do obviously have concern, more concern with the, the trench over near the access road to the, to the old DPW yard, which is labeled as Yard Drive. That is a, a road that was repaved within the last five years. We would expect it, you know, a not just to be trench paved, we would like to see, you know, a temporary pavement and then it to go a mill and overlay a foot beyond the limits with infrared repair on that roadway. And I'd like to see the same treatment over on Jefferson. Jefferson Street was another newly paved road. A little bit older than five years, but still relatively new within eight years. That intersection was done as part of the Contract 2 project. And these trenches just can't be, you know, National Grid Electric, I know you get no real connections to National Grid gas, but we're constantly struggling with, with settled patches and poor patches. And we've got to make sure that these patches get done correctly. And all seams are properly sealed with infrared infrared, infrared treatment. If that's something that you could commit to, I can certainly endorse the project and I don't know if you can commit to that.
I'm gonna have to send that information over and see what they can do about it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other question? Oh, sorry Steve, go ahead. Okay, is there any other?
That's all my questions, thank you.
Great. Any other comments from the council, questions? Does the public have any comments or questions as well? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. I, I will close the public hearing. And that's the last public hearing that we have tonight and move on to public comments. If anyone wants to provide public comment, they can do so by raising their hand on the, on the Zoom app.
We have one public comment from Karen Chavez.
Hi Karen.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President and members of the council. I have a couple of comments. I know that there's no direct answers being given by anybody on the council, but I would hope that maybe the town manager in his town manager report could address some of these issues. The first thing is what's going to happen to the ferry? Now that the person who actually runs the, the whole ferry operation is no longer with the town. Because you know, everybody knows how I feel about the ferry, I don't have to tell you that. I think this is the opportunity now to outsource this ferry and let's get rid of it. Also, I'm very concerned, as I'm sure some of you are, although you don't mention it, about the FY21 budget. I think last night at the finance meeting, one of the big issues has been partially resolved. We will certainly find out about that. But I'm just concerned about, as we're approaching, we've just finished seven months into the year, into the fiscal year. And I just want to know, you know, how do we stand? I realize we're about 12 and a half percent behind in revenues. But what is the, what, what is actually happening? Are we gonna have to have some layoffs? Are there going to be any other cutbacks? Just anything in general, Mr. Town Manager. Also, I'd like to know the start date of the planner. I, through the Freedom of Information, I did put in a request for a job description. And if she has a contract, which I have not seen yet, granted, it's only been two or three days, but I would hope that I would receive that sooner rather than later. Again, I understand that questions and the bantering back and forth does not go on. But I would hope that the town manager could address some of these issues in his report. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you Karen. Is there anyone else from the public? If you're on your phone, you can press star seven to raise your hand. Star nine, sorry. Or you could just raise your hand using the Zoom function there. Okay, so hearing none, I will close out public comment and we will move on to correspondences. Denise, have we had any correspondences?
We just had one correspondence from Shannon Pulis, who just has a comment about the bikes being used in town and doesn't feel that they're really that very important at this point. She's concerned and just asks the town council to listen to the fact that she just doesn't feel we need the bike shares right now. That's it, that's all I got.
Okay, anyone from the council would like to share any correspondences? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to committee reports. The Finance Committee, councillor Lutery, do we have a Finance Committee report?
We do. Finance Committee met last evening. We had the committee there, myself, councillor Farino, councillor Honan, we also had the town manager, assistant town manager, Karen Chavez. And a host of others. We, we had three items on the agenda. The first was to authorize the council to pay unpaid bills from a prior year, which totaled about $2,012.37. This is a typical item that occurs every year. And we did, we will come forward with positive recommendation on that. The second item on the agenda was to transfer 44,000 from the Town Council Reserve to the town clerk for the special election primary and the special election general, which will be happening the beginning and the end of March. We did have discussion on that. We will be coming forward with a positive recommendation. However, we made an amendment to have the money taken from free cash instead of the Town Council Reserve due to the fact that this would bring the council reserve down to $11,000 with still five months left. So we thought it would be prudent to take it from free cash to maintain a relatively stable balance in the the council reserve. The third item on the agenda was the trash contact, which was signed in July 1st of 2020. The result of that contract leaves the town with a roughly $400,000 deficit for fiscal 21, which we are currently in. So we are discussing ways to help manage that. Part of the discussions revolved around a trash fee, which we are looking into. That would help the town make up the deficit for this year, the new, the, the shortage resulting from the new contract. And see how that goes going forward. We will have a report on this, a full report and probably a recommendation coming by the end of February at our last meeting in February, second meeting in February. So you know, it's something that we've been under a pretty healthy and favorable contact, contract for the past seven years. We had to, the town manager had to go into negotiations to try to help us go forward with this. And it resulted obviously in a, in a increased pricing. But it is something that I think the town and the council has expected. Capital waste has been pretty generous to the town in terms of their service and in terms of their contract pricing. However, it still results in a relatively significant shortage that we are going to have to deal with. So there will be much more to come from that at the next council meeting. And that is all we have.
Great, thank you councillor. Is there any questions for councillor Lutery? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to rules and ordinances. Councillor Jero?
Thank you Vice President. On January 28th, the Rules and Ordinance Committee met remotely to tackle three items on its agenda. Present at this meeting were Vice President Christopher, Councillor Flackhart, Councillor DiMarco, myself and members of the public. The first item was related to the town council adopting remote teleconference capabilities for all future town council meetings. The committee discussed how currently the council is operating under an executive order that provides relief, the open meeting law, which allows the council to meet remotely. However, there is guidance under the AG's jurisdiction that predates COVID that would allow a public body to meet remotely. But given the current circumstances and how the world has changed so drastically over the past year, the committee agreed that it would be prudent to revisit the issue once the AG's guidance has been updated post-COVID. Instead of writing a new council rule that may become obsolete with the issuance of any new AG guidance as a result of what we've learned this past year. Meeting remotely. And with that said though, the committee did agree that remote participation for the public has become a critical part of our council meetings. And that is an important thing for us to continue in the future. The second item on the agenda was related to the polling locations for the upcoming special elections to fill the state rep seat. Given the discussion we had at our last council meeting related to the complications surrounding the use of our schools for the election, committee decided to move forward with a recommendation that would change the location of our polling stations. And a recommendation and emotion will be coming out of that in old business. And last, the committee discussed a traffic safety issue that was brought to us by a member of the public on Locust Street. And the committee decided that it would be best to ask TSAC to take a further look into this and hopefully come back to the council with a future recommendation on this, this issue in particular. So that's the report from Rules and Ordinances.
Thank you councillor. Does anyone have any question for councillor Jero? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the Joint Rules and Ordinances and Economic Development Subcommittee. For this, I'm going to pass the gavel to councillor DiMarco since he has such a regal background tonight. So the joint committee met last night to discuss the recommendation for the for the middle school zoning recommendation, which we've been continually doing over the past couple of months. And so we took a couple of different there were a couple of different ideas at play that we wanted to discuss around the mixed use requirement. What would be an appropriate zone around height? And the buffer zone, which had been such a, such something that people were rarely talking about in parking. And so the recommendation that we're, that we're coming to right now, we're not going to have a final recommendation for this meeting because for two reasons really, because we felt like it was important to solicit a little bit more public comment, even though we've already had that, given the fact that the planning board isn't going to meet until the third week in February. The council will still be able to make a recommendation before the next planning board meeting. So it won't, we won't have to readjust the timeline at all. And also thought that it was important to get whatever our recommendation would be in front of Ms. Kelly, who's our new planner. Her, her input's going to be very valuable through the process. So we felt like we, we could go another week, still make the, the council recommendation at the next meeting. And, and not really have to adjust the timeline for this at all. Or very much at all. It, we don't have to. So we decided that we, we take this up in a meeting next week to make the final recommendation. And so there should be a recommendation before you for the next council meeting. But as far as substantive recommendations that we made, we decided that the best way to go about this is what people have been talking about for a long time in regards to zoning and doing some type of a modified center business district zone. Because we know what happened in the fall of 2019 when we voted on this, there was a lot of public comment. And there was some that was adverse to making this what we've traditionally known as the Center Business District Zone. And one of the things that people brought up during that process was that there was a mixed use requirement that would have forced the, you know, most of this on the, on the ground to be non-residential use, which and if you look around town, you'll see that we have, you know, we don't have 100% vacancy or vacancy in the commercial district already. So we didn't want to have a sit, a situation where we were just exacerbating that problem and forcing someone to have a use in their, in their development that they weren't going to use. So in order to address some of those concerns that people had when we took this up in the fall of 2019, we decided that, I mean, it's a soft recommendation, of course, we haven't passed it yet. But for parcels that are of a certain size, there would be a reduced amount of, of non-residential use that would be required for whatever the floor, the frontage. for whatever the, the floor uh, the frontage of the building would be. Um, and I think that that will address some of the concerns that the people on Waldemar have had about uh, messing with the character of what that street is. So we, there wouldn't be, without that requirement that we have one hundred percent uh, uh non-residential uses on the front, you, you, you give someone more flexibility to put something that's more in character with that neighborhood on uh, on Walt uh, Waldemar Ave and Wheelock Street up there. Um, the other thing that we talked about was the um was what was debated so much during the uh, when we were uh, adopting that map in the fall of twenty nineteen, was this idea of a buffer zone that you would have uh, before you were able to go up in height. So currently, the CBD zoning regulations say that um, if a parcel is adjacent to a residential zone, uh, a parcel that happens to be a residential zone, that um, that that parcel, no matter how big or how small, can be only two and a half stories. And you know, so that obviously wouldn't work for a parcel as big as the middle school because that whole thing is one, uh, two parcels. So it's all adjacent to a residential, A, which would really um be difficult. And then you'll see, you know, it'll work the in- inverse way if you have like, such as what you have on uh Woodside Ave, we have lots of little stores uh, that are in parcels, so you would have a very small storefront where the second store in would be able to go up very high. So there's really um, not a whole lot of uniformity to what this buffer area is trying to do. So the recommendation from the committee is going to be to change that from a parcel-based buffer to one that is distance-based, so that it's more uniform around the whole central business district. Um, the other thing that we, we talked about in the meeting was around parking. And so um, we I thought about and are going to recommend that the council um, recommends uh, in some way restricting public parking um to whatever it is on that site. And that's not necessarily a zoning thing, that's more of a parking regulation thing. But I don't want to see um I don't want to see the, the neighborhood be overburdened by um, too many more cars uh, uh, in that neighborhood. So that's something that we wanted to do. I think that uh, with that come, i- if you're go- we're going to have a restriction such as that um, that we should, and there aren't going to be those externalities such as more cars in the neighborhood. We could give more flexibility to a potential developer to have um, to manage their parking on-site with um with, with lowering or our, the amount of um parking restrictions that we have in the zone. But all the while knowing that we're not going to have a situation where people are going to be able to park in the um, neighborhood. But because that's a, a, an ordinance change and not a zoning change, we want to make sure that those two things happen at the same time. Um, we also made a recommendation around uh, green space potentially, um, and this also isn't a zoning um, regulation. This is one that would be taken up through the RFP process, one that connects Ingleside Park to the center. So to prioritize green space and make sure that um, you know, there is some type of connectivity between the center and Ingleside Park. Um, and then we adjourned that meeting. Um, but we are going to be having another one next week so that we can sort of drill down a little bit more on those recommendations. Thank you.
There any uh, questions for Vice President Christopher on that joint committee report? I know there was a lot there. Then I will pass the gravel back to Vice President Christopher.
Thank you councillor, valiant job. Um, okay, so uh, now we'll move on in the agenda to the town manager's report.
Hey, thank you, Council Vice President. Um, I want to hit on um, Karen Chavez's questions first uh, to make sure I knock them out. Um, in terms of the ferry, um, we are still planning on operating the ferry until um, we find another operator for it. Um, I appreciate your point concerning um, your um, previous viewpoints on uh, that you've expressed concerning the ferry um, and the financial constraints um, that it puts us in. Although um, T N G has moved on to um, another position outside of the town, or outside of working with the town. Um, we still have the captains that work there, um, and we had um, some of the other people involved with the program um, in terms of the maintenance of the boat and stuff like that. So we're gonna keep doing it for now. Um, we continue to explore options um, in terms of the operation of the ferry. Um, and we'll we'll see what we can do. Um, this is not necessarily the time that um, other entities are looking to acquire more equipment. So we've been discussions, uh, Boston Harbor Cruises changed ownership last year. Um, we can engage in discussions with them again. And go from there. Um, we'll see what happens with uh, the management within um, our internal staff. We're having discussions and trying to plan that out um, as we speak, because that was a new development as of last week. For the state of the fiscal twenty one budget, um, and where we stand, um, I want to invite Assistant Town Manager Anna Friedman on mute herself quickly.
Sure, um, thank you. And so just to uh, be responsive to um the, the questions that were raised during the uh, public comment. Um, we are very, very closely monitoring the F Y twenty one budget. Um, it's what you all pay me to do. I spend my time every day uh, looking at all of our accounts. Um, and so just to uh, let folks know and give you some transparency into what that looks like. This time of year, we're about halfway through the year, so as part of our normal process as we gear up for the next year's budget, we, I actually meet um, individually with every single department head and priority was talking about their budgets for next year. We literally go line by line in their current budget. And we talk about uh, their spending rates for the current year, uh, what they have left encumbered, uh, what do they foresee in their horizon? If they foresee they won't need spending, uh, we have discussions about whether I can assume that that money would be turned back to the general fund. And so the way that our budget is in balance is as long as our revenues and our expenditures meet, our budget's in balance. So if our revenues are coming in under budget, that means our spending has to come in under budget as well. Um, at the same time, and then I'm checking up on expenditures and making sure that we're staying within our budget uh, to the extent that we, and identifying where we might have money that we can um, turn back at the end of the year to help balance the budget. And that would be just from things that we identify are not, you know, typically things with expenditures we would make, but not in a, in a situation like this year when things are so tight. You know, really micromanaging purchasing of office supplies, um, you know, any, any kind of savings or efficiencies we can determine. Um, you know, keep ensuring that we, I'm walking around the office turning lights off all the time. I'm like that person that if I see a light on, then no one's there, turning it off, like honestly, at that level. And so at the same time, I'm also looking at our revenues. And so we um, the, I actually just went through an exercise this afternoon of updating our revenues um through the end of uh, December. I'm working at January, we'll have um, in a, a week or two from now uh, because we're finalizing some entries in the system there. So we're around, we're still hovering around uh, twelve percent under where we were at this time last year, which is concerning. Normally, we overperform our budgeted revenues and that's what contributes to our free cash at the end of the year, having those conservative revenue estimates. Um, so what I'm doing right now is also then digging deeper into those specific revenue lines and determining which things seem to be underperforming and is it a timing issue and maybe the those revenues, maybe there's something that we can count on that, or is something not happening because of potentially of um you know, social distancing guidelines and so maybe we're not collecting certain types of fees and going through with departments and identifying what what, how it, how might we address that, or is it something we can't address because of a situation out of our control? And so we, we work super carefully to make sure that we are generating all the revenue uh, that we possibly can based on what um, the structure is for the budget and then also ensuring that we're um, spending as little as we can uh, due to the pressures on the budget this year, um, resulting from COVID. We're also identifying, do we have line items that are running, that are running over budget? So for example, we never really fully uh, budget our snow and ice. I don't know about um, Director Cala, but I was really excited to see it was mo- mostly rain and not two feet of snow over the past two days. Um, hopefully that will be more gentle on our snow and ice budget, uh, because that's never fully paid for. Uh, we are able to budget into deficit, but we do end up having to pay for it at the end of the year. So that's um, so where we are in terms of what types of further adjustments uh, might we have to make, that is still being assessed by the town manager and I right now. Um, to the extent that we would need to make further adjustments, um, we would um, circle back um, with any, with stakeholders um, on that um, as soon as possible, but at this point in time, um, we're not prepared to indicate that we would need to make any further adjustments. We are working, like I said, to identify turnbacks within departments that may be able to sort of fully um, sort of cover any revenue shortfall. For uh, one thing I can just mention really quickly, I know our um, they assess what we pay to like the regional, the result, regional dispatch. Uh, we know that that is actually, we're gonna have a lot of savings in that line this year. So there, I'm going through a process of adding up and seeing what types of turnbacks we're gonna have, which right now I think should cover um, any potential deficits and any revenue losses, but um, you know, in a couple of weeks from now, that might look different. And so we monitor that every single week. And uh, we will keep folks in the loop as um, as developments continue to, to happen on that.
Thank you, Anna. Um, and again, that kind of highlights the point that Anna and I were trying to make last year with the budget presentation um, with our uh, very conservative estimates concerning revenue. Um, even though we were incredibly conservative, it looks like uh, we still even overshot uh, what we had projected, so we will continue working on this. Um, Anna's working very hard at the development of um, the fiscal twenty-two budget, but uh, we'll continue to update concerning where we stand um, in the current fiscal year. Um, lastly, concerning the planning position, um, I can uh, have the job description sent directly to you, Karen. Um, and there is no contract for this position. And Rachel um, started yesterday, actually, um, Rachel Kelly. So um, she spoke with um, Peter actually concerning the middle school project. That's her first priority right now. Um, and she's getting up to speed with some other stuff in town, uh, but her priority coming in um, is this, the zoning concerning the center business district and the middle school. Um, beyond that, um, I want to take a minute to give a quick update concerning um the internet um, within our schools. Uh, I am well aware that it's an issue. Um, the day after Martin Luther King Day on uh, Tuesday, January nineteenth, um, we've essentially been having problems since that date, unfortunately. It, it's been a few different things. Um, we have had multiple managed service providers come in to help us. Uh, we have had uh, the company that installed the phones um, in the last week of December come in and working extensively. Um, we've had people working on weekends. Uh, we've had Homeland Security come in. We've had Comcast come in. Um, we are working to systematically check issues off a list to figure out how to um, get our capacity and bandwidth um, back into um, a better place. Um, that said, um, this speaks to a few different things concerning um, the, we don't have a redundant internet service um, in town or at municipal buildings. Um, speaks to maybe um, getting um, one of the, um, there's companies called um, Crown Castle and things like that. They do uh satellite dish uh, wireless um, internet um that we could potentially contract with them. We are probably gonna have a second Comcast fiber connection at Town Hall. Um, we're working through a bunch of different ways to alleviate this issue. All of that said, um, we have procured uh, the wireless uh, jet packs that are referred to by Verizon, the MiFi wireless hotspots um, to be deployed to um, our entire um, school staff. Um, so that we will have uh, reliable wireless internet um, within our um, school buildings. Um, it, that's gonna be paid for by CARES Act money um, under um, distance learning and hybrid learning models. Um, so we have money to pay for that um, to try to fix this. Um, again, um, we are working through this. Lisa has worked incredibly hard on this um, as well as uh, my executive assistant, Larissa Wojcik. Um, and we're, we're trying our best to get to the bottom of this. Um, we with having so many of these sort of services um, not reside in town um, and having to try to um, pull people in who helped build um, the new middle high school um, and people who built out our previous networks and things like that, um, to figure out how these things were built and the diagnostics has been a struggle and a challenge. Um, so a lot of things to fix. That said, um, this week we will have those um, wireless jet packs. Um, we are fixing the phone problem. So again, we're trying to tick things off to ensure that the students can be educated in the model um, that you all have determined, well, the superintendent has determined, which is hybrid right now. Um, so again, we have been spending a lot of time and attention and money to alleviate this issue. It is very clear that it's an issue. Um, I had issues in the town that I live in um, with our internet service um, as well and it impacted our schools as well. Um, capacity issues with Comcast and Verizon across the country uh, have been coming to light. Um, that said, not necessarily their problem here, a little bit of our network as well, but we're working very hard to get it fixed. Um, so I hope to have that fixed in um, the very near future, or at least have solutions um, so that we can continue educating the way that we saw fit. Moving on from that, um, I would ask Meredith Hurley um, to um, unmute herself and give an update concerning COVID. I know you have some slides, Meredith.
Hi, everybody. Um, let me just switch over to my Alright. I hope you're all doing well. I'm just gonna minimize, so I don't have to look at myself. So here are our most recent public health updates. So as of today, February second, we have had one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five confirmed cases. Um, holding steady with thirty-four deceased. Currently, a hundred and eighteen folks are isolated and we have one thousand six hundred and eighty-three who have recovered from COVID nineteen. Our incidence rate is starting to come down. We were at eighty-seven point eight cases per hundred thousand in the last fourteen days. Um, our percent positive remains at hovering between a five and a six percent. Um, this week it was five point nine four and we are still considered a high-risk designated community. But as we've seen throughout the Commonwealth, we are also starting to see a trend down that I'm hopeful is gonna be sustained. Normally, at this point, I would kind of talk about the, the testing metrics. I don't have the most updated since the new, the new test site opened last Tuesday officially. Um, they've been doing a soft opening. They will be reporting metrics to me, I believe at the end of this week. That'll break down the number of people that have been tested and the number of winter residents, so I'll be happy to share those at your next meeting. But to kind of give you some updates on the vaccine rollout, so we know that this has been an extremely frustrating time for people um, with with trying to figure out where and how to get vaccinated. So right now, as of yesterday, we've moved it out of phase one and into phase two, step one. So that includes all individuals that are over the age of seventy-five. Those individuals are now eligible for vaccination. The struggle is that the supply of vaccine is still very small here um, across the country and also here in the Commonwealth, so that um, that's a very important point for, to understand why this rollout has been so confusing and so frustrating for people is that the supply is still very constrained. And unfortunately, I don't think that that was as well communicated to folks to manage expectations. So here are some important points, is that the supply is still very limited. We here in the town of Winter have not been allocated vaccines to date. Today, I, yesterday I put in a request for doses to hopefully be delivered next week. That is not a guarantee. That is not even, um, they, the state will not even let me know if out of that request, if I get a quarter of it, if I could get a half of it, so it makes the, the planning very difficult. The rollout has definitely been less than ideal for those with limited or nonexistent access to the internet. Um, on the backside of this, we've been doing a lot of preparation and um, logistical groundwork. So that if we were to be allocated vaccine, um, we would be ready to stand up a clinic of some sort within seven days at the max. You know, I feel like that's where our time can be spent, the town, the know, I feel like that's where our time can be spent. The town, the state has been really conversating more so with local health departments to say that our role is really to, to work with those that cannot, that cannot access the bigger sites that they're setting up. More sites are coming online. The problem being that many times appointments are being, are, need to be made online. And with the over seventy-five population, or really, it doesn't even matter if you're, some people just don't have an internet access. It's difficult. And I know personally, when, when I knew when the, like, a lot of people, we knew when the appointments were going to open, I had a difficult time playing around in the system. It was, I felt like it was very fractured. There was a different procedure for each different site. You couldn't really, some sites were live as of midnight, some sites were live hours of nine AM, some sites were live eight o'clock the night before. It wasn't, you know, we, we are definitely acknowledging that the rollout was not as smooth as we would have liked. So here are some, some sites that are closest to, to Winthrop. The super site, there's a big site at Fenway, there's a site up in Danvers, there are more sites coming on each and every day. So this is just a little list of, of sites that have come on that seem to be pretty good about making appointments. There's a cycle that the state is using where every provider, every vaccine provider throughout the Commonwealth, on, on Tuesday by five o'clock, we have to tell the state how many people we could vaccinate the following week. And then they get back to us on Friday at some point to say, okay, so you said that you could vaccinate five hundred people. We're allocating you X amount of doses. It'll be delivered somewhere between Monday and Tuesday. And then you kind of roll forward that way. So it's a, it's a wave of a process. And then there's logistics, obviously, with the vaccines, once they're delivered, how long they stay, stay stable, how long of a time it is before we need to use them. And also, planning for, once vials are punctured, they have to be used within six hours and making sure that there's not a drop of vaccine that is wasted. This will all be up on WCAT also. Some great news that we've also learned is that East Boston Neighborhood Health Center has stood up four locations that are in close proximity. So there's one in Revere, there's one in Chelsea, and then there's two in East Boston. And it's open to anybody over the, the age of seventy-five. You did not need to be a patient of the health center. And they have a hotline set up so people can call and make an appointment, which is all listed here. They're, they believe that each week they'll be able to vaccinate upwards of three thousand people between the four sites. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that is going to help with, with the access for, for our residents here in Winthrop. So our communications plan going forward is, starting this week, we'll be putting up daily posts on social media related to vaccines, site availability, new sites, how to, you know, if there's any tidbits or information that we can share on phone numbers, the state is, is going to be standing up a hotline to help people. Kathy Dixon and I and Matt Rhodes now at the senior center talk consistently about sharing information and they're pushing information out to the seniors. We're going to update some links on the town website and I will be sending out video updates to WCAT with the same info that's being shared on social media so that we can try and, and share this information more in real time so that it's relevant for people to, to access vaccines. Upcoming, we're going to be taping weekly updates on WCAT and also providing a dedicated phone number for vaccine questions and assistance. But that is where we're at with vaccines and COVID. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, Counselor Honan?
Do we have the, the freezer capacity for distribution?
For Pfizer, we don't. There's ways, there's a couple of different ways. So this is all through, all through the, the late fall, as we knew that the vaccines were approaching approval. The message from the state to local health was, don't buy any freezers. We're not gonna, you, you won't be doing Pfizer. And now in the last three weeks, it shifted where they'll say, if you can take Pfizer, we'll give you vaccine. So there's ways, people are starting to share ways to finagle, like, the trays of Pfizer come in doses of nine hundred and seventy-five. And if they sit on dry ice, then they can last, they can last for, I, I'll have to look back at it, but there's potential of being able to use it in a community that doesn't have a negative sub freezer. Or what, or if we could contract with a healthcare organization that has that ability, that would essentially hold that vaccine supply for us. That's another option that we're trying to navigate, or at least get some more answers to.
Okay, are there any other questions from the council? Counselor Damaco?
Thank you. Stephen, why don't you go first because mine's kind of off subject?
Okay, Counselor Ruggiero?
Thank you. Thank you, Meredith, for everything, as always. Just to clarify, so if you are over the age of seventy-five right now, the most efficient way to, to sort of get on the list or, or get prepared for the vaccination is to call the phone number on the slide that you shared and work with the East Boston Neighborhood Health Clinic. That's assuming if internet isn't really an option for you, or email, you don't have an email address, things like that.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. You know, I think people come into, the population of seventy-five and over, there's a wide range of functional abilities and supports with families and it runs, it runs the gamut. So, so I would say that's kind of a nice landing point for me to say, there's this phone number that you can call and that helps out a lot of people before the state stands up whatever hotline they're going to be doing. You know, we're going through some of the sites is also okay. It's getting more streamlined, the way that the state is putting the information out. But there's essentially six different, six maybe more different platforms, web platforms for people to make appointments. It's hard to manage that. But I would say my first, my, me personally, what I recommend to people is call the East Boston number first. And if you have like the ability to kind of like click down through some of those other options. I think Gillette, I, the feedback I've heard from the Gillette site, which is really far away, is that it's smooth. And if, you know, if people are able to go down there, then that's a great place to get vaccinated. I think it's the same thing with Fenway Park. And we're getting more feedback every day about which sites are, are well-run. They all seem to be well-run at this point. But those are kind of tidbits of information that I'd like to share more regularly with people.
Sure, sure. No, and I just know from personal experience helping a family member with this, it's sort of a race to see if you can get onto the Walgreens website to, to where they have one available. And so, you know, you need to kind of constantly be checking, at least that's just my.
Mine too.
Okay, okay. And so, you know, getting on a waitlist by calling a phone number might be a more direct method of, of getting this. So, but thank you again.
No problem.
Counselor Damaco?
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on one thing, a positive thing that I saw this week, which was a press release, released last week, Director Hurley about presenting with Officer Sacro Gregarion, the winter recovery model. I wanted to see if you had anything positive to share about that experience. And that's something where moving forward, you know, we've kind of gotten away from it because of COVID and everything. But, you know, obviously addiction is more of a problem now than it was at the beginning of this. And this is definitely a program where I would like to see funding to ensure that this program continues long term. So I wanted to see if you had any insight on that.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. I, I would like to see some additional funding also for, for this kind of programming. Sergeant Jeterian and I have been working on this program for now, the greater part of six years. So just to give you, for, I think, almost everybody on this screen, also read the press release. So last week, Sergeant Jeterian and I were invited by the Bureau of Justice Assistance from the Department of Justice to present at one of their webinars that was attended by over three hundred people from across the country to share what we do here in Winthrop, where we meld together public health and public safety in a community-based recovery model. And we were approached by the Bureau of Justice Assistance to mentor other police departments across the country on our model. And then they asked us to go back and present to a larger audience. So it was, it was great. It was also like nice feedback to hear from really a wide range of folks. So, you know, COVID has taken on such a, a life of its own. And there's a couple of good things that have potentially come out of COVID. You know, one of the, the reasons why we've been able to work so well together here is that we've already had this, these established relationships between public safety and public health and directly as a result of the CLEAR program. So it was very easy to collapse into the incidents, incident command model back in March, primarily because, you know, there's like a silly saying that says, you know, you never want to introduce yourself at the site of a crisis. You kind of like want to have your trust built up beforehand. So it was very easy to transition our roles into a bunch of different to work across sectors, whether it's COVID, whether it's addiction, we're moving into domestic violence, we're trying to modify this. So, you know, we were kind of teed up to have some great opportunities last spring that we were able to maintain. The Department of Justice being one of them, our relationship with PARI, we've been part of a CDC project to evaluate toolkits for the same thing. We've been asked to present at two separate national conferences on it in addition to this webinar. So, you know, right now, what we're working on is really rooting it in in strategic planning and evaluation so that we are developing kind of higher level metrics to measure success beyond just what is our overdose rate and what is like our recovery rate. That will still be very much in the model, but we're trying to develop more tools to capture the quantitative part of this and to really show the, the transition of wellness. There's, I know that there's a, a, a big momentum between public health and public safety, especially after the events that we saw this spring and that we're continuing to see. We're, we're fortunate here that we had laid that foundation beginning six years ago. It's kind of, in my world, it's like the big thing is like intersectional work between public safety and public, public health and particularly addressing violence in the community, which is also a public health crisis. So, you know, we, we're kind of for our community. And when I, when we do these presentations, I mean, we're, we presented with Tucson on this last one. We are, we usually have to put up a map and say we're right there. We're a community of nineteen thousand. But that's actually a draw for a lot of people because so many of these models are built off of well-resourced, large metropolitan areas. So we're able to speak a lot more about what it looks like when you're trying to, you know, figure out where the next, like, the next, like, grant is going to come from and like, how do you hustle that? And, and how do you streamline the process? So, so yes, thank you. It was, we look forward to kind of continuing on. And luckily, you know, COVID didn't sidetrack us too, too much and all of that. We had some delays in some of our grants, but overall, we're kind of trying to move forward in this also.
Thank you for the job you do, Meredith. We all appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Honan?
Hi, Meredith, just one more question, back to the vaccine. And my apologies if we've already answered this question. Who decides where the vaccine distribution centers are set up?
The state is my understanding. So there, there's a health, there's an equity panel also that is helping to determine sites. For example, and I, I would have to check this now, but the contracts with CVS and Walgreens were, were administered based on the percentage of population of African-American and Latinx. And in, so our CVS probably wasn't on the list, but you would see some of, some other CVS and Walgreens that have more representation of different cultures.
So they're looking for, you know, representation of people that are more likely to pass from COVID- nineteen and, and service those communities first and?
Yeah, yeah. Although, I mean, it's really hard because, you know, with the, the North Suffolk Collaborative that we have between Revere, Chelsea and Winthrop, you would think that, for example, like Chelsea would really be given a lot of upfront resources with COVID deployment, with vaccine deployment. And watching them, they're kind of running even with us right now. They're going, they're, they're having a good response now. East Boston has been really helpful to them, which is wonderful to see, especially because they took out the requirement of network providership, which is amazing. So, you know, it's, it's like we all kind of started off two steps behind when they released the, the latest eligibility of yesterday. So they rushed through the end of phase one to get to phase two. Now they're telling us that we're going to be in phase two, step one, for a fair amount of time because it is such a, it's a significant population. They'll move into step two prior to completing, everybody that wants to be vaccinated in step one, as like this rollout continues. But they haven't given any clear indication as to when it will be even any sort of moving from the state.
Sure. No, I can, I'm sure most of us or all of us can agree that if somebody's more likely to die of the disease or suffer more seriously from the disease, that we'd all be fine with them getting the vaccine first.
Yeah. And I think that's why East Boston actually has been granted the amount of vaccine that they've had is because they are servicing, you know, their health net. They're servicing those that are most underserved. And they're, they've agreed to vaccinate anybody irregardless of provider. So, which is great. They've been really wonderful to have conversations with. So I think that they're going to be a good support going forward as well.
Thanks, Meredith.
Great. Are there any other questions from the council? Any for the town manager? Counselor Teary?
Thanks, Council President. Just, Austin, I'm, I'm sure it's been incredibly stressful with this internet. Is the internet issues we're having strictly geared towards the schools or town buildings affected as well?
Town buildings are affected as well. We actually have had impacted operations over the past two weeks as well.
Now, with fire and police all set, though?
So their ability to respond to calls is not impacted. Their, and also their ability to dispatch and things like that is not impacted. The phones to call from office to office, they were switched over as well. They have a different managed service provider, though, Balsam, Balsam Networks. And Balsam Networks has been in contact with the phone company as well, TPX. And they've been working through that. They haven't had the negative, a significant negative impacts as the other municipal buildings, though.
Okay. And do we, I, I know you went through a, a ton of stuff that's been going on. Do we have a, a cause yet of what happened? Or do we have a solution in place yet?
Other than a quick? First one, no. First one, no. Um, second one, we're working on, uh, we don't have a root cause. We're, um, having one of our many, not just one actually, multiple managed service providers, um, go through our network, um, and try to understand what's happening on it. Um, it seems like our network is built, um, in an overcomplicated manner so that our managed service provider for both the towns and schools, uh, retrofit is having difficulty identifying what's called the MAC address and IP addresses of the phones through the network. Um, think of that as like the license plates, um, of the individual devices, um, as well as computers. Um, the way all the wires are set up. Um, and, uh, I'm actually, in the middle high school, I'm actually bringing back, um, Brian, who previously worked for retrofit and then worked for the town and now works for someone else to help us out with some of our switches, um, and where some of our wiring is. Um, we are, again, like I said, we're kind of trying to determine the root cause so that we can, we're going through potential issues to check off to try to determine a root cause. Uh, we are also simultaneously working to shore things up that we won't have this issue in the future. Uh, and that speaks to, um, separating the town and school fiber connections, having the town have one individual fiber connection, having the schools have one individual fiber connection, um, in terms of bandwidth capacity and things like that. Um, having firewalls set up differently, having, um, how the phone traffic is routed as well. Um, and cleaning up some of this stuff because, um, on, it seems like what happened previously um, isn't necessarily the fault of anyone. It's just how things were set up over time. They were set up in, in, like, they added complexity each time they added on to the system. Um, so now what we're trying to do is unwind all of these things, um, find the root cause of what's happening. Um, and again, that's why we're Comcast was working with Lisa on this. Um, Homeland Security came in, um, Wayne Carter had them come in, um, to check on some things. We, we don't necessarily know if this is like a DDoS attack or it could be something on, um, someone's devices that are connecting to our network. So again, we're, we're checking off the phones, we're checking off other things to just make sure, say, keep checking off what potential problems there are. Um, so, um, we're trying, um, right now, the, one of the priorities has been getting this new phone system, just checking that off the list so that can be not an issue anymore. Um, figuring out with Homeland if we have issues with our network, um, and also working with multiple managed service providers about the complexity of our network and figuring out, um, when I say like traffic is directed, it's like how the cars are moving on a highway, um, how all of our data is moving through the network. Um, we need to spend a little more time on that and figure out what's going on. Um, but we're, we're working on it. And then again, the quick solution is the Verizon hotspots, um, to have those available. We can group manage those so, um, it can almost look like a network setup within the schools, um, same type of content filters and things like that. Um, again, it speaks to, uh, we don't have, um, a redundant internet, um, provider in town or in our municipal buildings or schools. So, um, again, more projects to have to work on over time.
Counselor Ferrino?
So, so, uh, uh, Tom Manager, uh, is Verizon, you said, is involved in it now, uh, in this?
Uh, so Verizon for, uh, wireless, um, those are all Wi-Fi, um, over four G, um, connected hotspots. Um, so it'd be a wireless solution.
Have they, uh, have we called them in at all to maybe help us with the crisis? You know, uh, as another vendor, another entity that could give us some brain power?
Um, I haven't with them. Um, they, they aren't, um, so hotspots are the things, it's basically like a cell phone that you get internet over. There's just no cell phone, your iPad connects to it. That's actually what I've been working off of in, uh, my office, um, with the Wi-Fi being a little finicky lately. Um, so Verizon, it, we're just working with their wireless stuff. And this is again, their, um, like hybrid learning, work, uh, educate at home model type of thing. So we're working with them in terms of the model. Um, they won't be operating on our internal network, our internal, um, IT stuff. Um, the traffic won't go over that, so they don't really have, um, a place in that. And then in terms of connecting with files or something like that, um, unfortunately, um, I've reached out to, um, uh, what is his name? Stanley Usevek, I think. Um, someone, but the, one of the Verizon higher up people, um, and they are, um, unfortunately not interested in building out in town, nor is Verizon, or not in Verizon, RCN, excuse me. Um, I've reached out to, um, Starry Internet and NetBlazer, which are both, um, satellite-based wireless internet providers that, um, those are more residential type of things. And they'd have to set up a network in town utilizing, um, some public buildings as kind, how they kind of build their mesh network over the town. Um, w- we wouldn't get, we can potentially engage with them as well. Um, but first we want to fix this problem. Second, we want to try to, um, build up some redundancies so that even if we're having these types of problems in the future, we have a way to shift over, get us working and then fix the problem.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um,
Go ahead, uh.
Sorry, the only other thing I was going to say is that, um, Meredith is talking about, uh, the difficult distribution of the vaccines. Um, I've made my point known about it, um, to the people at the state and federal level. Um, Tom Emerson has done a very good job advocating for Chelsea as well. Uh, this has been very difficult and it speaks to, uh, the difficulties that we've had, um, with contact tracing initially, with testing. Um, a lot of this stuff is falling down to municipalities, um, to try to set up the infrastructure for, and then, um, once the, um, whether it be, um, tests themselves or the vaccine, um, or the ability to contact trace and store the information somewhere. A lot of this stuff has fallen down on municipalities and it's been, um, pretty difficult. Um, and we've had hard conversations about some of this stuff. Um, East Boston Nibber Health, they got those doses, their initial group of doses from Northeastern because the state was giving Northeastern a hard time about who Northeastern was distributing those vaccines to. So the state is on top of where these vaccines are. We just have such a limited supply. There are, I believe, eighty thousand shots coming to, Meredith, am I right on that? Is it eighty thousand shots come to the state per mark, uh, per week? Meredith may not be there. Don't worry about it. I think it's eighty thousand shots per week. Um, so there, there's a complete constraint on it. So when they have those supersites, um, and they're distributing to some of the pharmacies, our availability to get them at a municipal level is a little bit harder. Um, yet we are the ones that are tasked with, uh, looking out for the most vulnerable populations. So, um, we're going to keep working on it. I keep advocating for us to get more resources. Um, and again, as soon as doses are available, um, we look forward to having them in town, um, and having, um, a vaccination site. Uh, Meredith has already been working very hard on that. Um, and that is all from me. Thank you, uh, Vice President, uh, Christopher.
Thank you, um, Town Manager. So no further questions from the council? Okay, I thank you for that report. Um, we don't have a school department update as, uh, President Boncorie is not present. I'm sure he'll hate us at our next meeting about anything we had missed. And with that, we will move on to old business. So the first, um, first topic in old business is that the town council transferred forty-four thousand for town clerks off it to the town clerk, clerk's office for upcoming election costs. Uh, Counselor LaTieri, you had a recommendation?
Yes, we have a amended motion coming out of committee with unanimous approval. And the motion is, I move that the town council vote to transfer forty-four thousand dollars from the town's free cash to the town clerk account number zero one one six one five one dash five one two zero zero five to fund the cost associated with the March second twenty twenty-one primary and the March thirtieth twenty twenty-one special election cost, but take any other action relative there too. This came out of committee, does not need a second.
Okay, so the only thing that changed is the funding source?
Correct.
Committee? Okay, great. Uh, is there any, um, debate or questions for Counselor LaTieri on the motion? Counselor DiMarco?
Counselor LaTieri, what is the, uh, funding breakdown? Do you have any idea? In terms of what?
Well, i- in terms of details and such? Um, we have, you know, obviously the towns run many elections in the past. The cost per election is usually around twenty to twenty-one thousand. It includes that stuff as mailings, election ballots, personnel, uh, police details. Is a lot of cost, e- election workers and, um, mailing, e- especially now with mail-in ballots and such. So there are, you know, it's a typical cost of a typical election. It doesn't cost that much more or less depending on the, you know, the turnout doesn't really have an effect that much. You still need the details, you still need the people working, you still need to do the mailings and the notices.
But other than, other than the location, which we'll talk about later, there's no difference with this election than any other one in terms?
No, we will discuss the locations later.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anna might have something to add to this.
Uh, uh, thank you, Counselor. I wanted to, um, just to account one to mark with a question about any changes. Um, to the extent that this particular election has increased, uh, mail-in, um, because of the, because of, uh, COVID nineteen, there, our CARES Act money, um, does provide for sort of extraordinary special election, uh, sorry, extraordinary election costs, um, due to, you know, changes related to mail-in, um, mail-in ballots. So to the extent that we're, um, we will work to quantify any sort of additional hours that are, are dropped for, uh, mail-in ballots, um, for any, for staffing, and we will work to charge that over to the CARES Act and leverage that to the best of our abilities in the guidelines we have there and reduce, um, you know, any additional costs so that the, that the appropriation today would just be for those typical costs that we would sort of bear for any, any, any normal election and that sort of that above and beyond cost that we might see for the mail-in, uh, piece, we'll work to charge that to our CARES allocation.
And we will also see as a town, we will see some sort of reimbursement from the state at a future date. It could be this year, it could be fiscal twenty-two. Uh, usually at a special election, the cost of the seat, the salary associated with the seat that is up, um, will be, this, the savings in the amount of time that it has been vacated will be reimbursed to the cities and towns or towns that, that it is affected by. So we will not be getting fully reimbursed. There will be some sort of partial reimbursement coming back to the town, uh, over the next, you know, several months to a year.
Okay, Counselor Flockhart, I saw you had your hand up. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, it, yes, thank you, Vice President Christopher. Anna, you have twice mentioned now CARES money. I understood that our CARES money expired at the end of the year. Have we received a new allocation?
That's, uh, that's an excellent question, Counselor. Thank you so much. Um, and I apologize to the council that I, um, did not provide clarity on that. So excellent news, um, the, the release package that was passed, um, at the federal level, I believe it was the end of December, extended the deadline for the CARES Act so that it did not provide us with any additional funding, but has given us until December of this current calendar year, the full additional twelve months, um, under which we can continue to spend down our allocation, which is great. Uh, we do have some funds remaining and we are working internally to assess, um, and project out for the rest of this year, what additional costs related to PPE, um, you know, um, disinfecting, anything else like that that internally we need. And additionally, we're working to identify what additional needs the community, uh, we can identify, um, that would be helpful to, um, direct some funding out into the community based on what we have, um, what we have remaining from our allocation. And when we're, we hope to have something to bring back to the council on that, uh, soon. We're just trying to make sure that we don't spend the CARES Act money ten times, ten different ways. But, uh, we're very excited that we have, um, a full twelve more months to spend down our allocation.
Great, thank you. Would, uh, anyone else like to add anything? Okay, uh, seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the rule for this motion.
Counselor Aggero?
Yes.
Counselor Flockhart?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor LaTieri?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor LaConte?
Yes.
Counselor Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorie? Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, town council vote to authorize two thousand twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents to pay unpaid bills of prior year. Counselor LaTieri?
Uh, thank you, Council Vice President. This also is coming out of committee with positive recommendation. The motion is as follows. I move that the town council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year to be paid from current year departmental budgets as noted below or take any other action relative there too. Departments, police, a hundred and sixty-eight dollars, human resources, uh, two hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, POCSY rec, three hundred, uh, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, uh, POCSY rec again, one thousand eighty-nine dollars, forty-three cents. Uh, and the police, three separate items, a hundred and fifty-two oh one, eight dollars and sixty-two cents, and one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. The total is two thousand twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents. This is coming out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second.
Okay. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add on this motion? Assistant Town Manager?
Uh, just for the, just for the council clarification on this. So, um, this motion is one that we do basically every year. Um, it's a cleanup motion, um, that we do when we often, when we close the end, at the, at the end of the fiscal year, we've closed out the previous year. We've done our very best to encumber any invoices that maybe are still late in arriving to us. And what always ends up happening is that we'll always end up getting some that will sort of trickle in late that weren't on our radar, that were still outstanding, we'll assess whether it was one that we indeed do owe. And then there are normally a handful that we have to bring to the council for your approval for us to pay them because there is not technically an appropriation for us to pay those invoices because they are FY twenty invoices. And so we aren't able to pay these invoices that were late from these vendors. Um, or if it was something that we missed, uh, without your approval of this motion. If there are specific questions on any of the actual invoices that came in and what they were for, um, our assistant CFO, uh, Robert Powers is on the line, um, and he can answer any of those questions about the specific invoices.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the rule for this motion.
Counselor Aggero?
Yes.
Counselor Flockhart?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Counselor Honan?
Yes.
Counselor LaConte?
Yes.
Counselor Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncorie?
Thank you.
Okay, town council adopt council rules to include permanent Zoom participation at all future meetings. Counselor Aggero?
Uh, thank you, Council Vice President. Um, so as I mentioned in the committee report, this is something that, um, the Rules and Ordances Committee discussed and talked about and are coming out of committee with a positive recommendation. Um, the motion was provided to us all just before the meeting, which was approved by KMP. Um, and I will read that now. Um, motion that the town council vote to authorize the following change of election polling location for the state primary election to be held on March second, twenty twenty-one, and the special election to be held on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas there exists an unexpected vacancy in the Office of State Representative for the town of Winthrop.
Me, uh, I'm just going to interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
Apologies, um, this is for the, uh, the Zoom, the Zoom, uh, item on the agenda.
Oh, I apologize, um. I apologize about that. Yeah, so the, the council, the, I'm not sure if there is a motion coming out for this, um, Council Vice President? Yeah, okay.
I'd be, the item that, uh, how we took it up in committee.
Sure, yeah, so I, I mentioned this during the committee report, but, um, we ended up voting unanimously to, um, revisit this issue when, um, the updated guidance from the Attorney General is available to us in order to sort of give us a better, uh, understanding of, um, of what we're working with honestly, when it comes to remote participation in the future. Um, and again, like, like I mentioned earlier, this is, um, remote participation in terms of, um, public participation is something that we, um, most definitely are taking into account and is something that we, as a committee, all agreed is important to continue on in the future. So it's, this has been tabled, um, until further guidance is available.
Okay, great. Um, would anybody like to comment on the, uh, on the item? Before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Town council move, to move the joint, uh, the joint committee recommendation on middle school zoning. Um, I will once again pass the gavel to Counselor DiMarco on this. Um, like I said, in my report on the joint committee, uh, we don't have a recommendation that we are going to be bringing forward at this meeting. Um, we expect and anticipate that we will be bringing one forward at the next one. Um, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them now or any comments about that.
Any questions? Any questions for Vice President Christopher? All right, Vice President, I hand it back to you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of polling election, election polling locations. Councilor Agiero?
Thank you. I was, uh, so excited to read it. Um, I jumped again, so I had a false dial. Let's, let's try that again. Um, I will read the motion that was provided to us by KMP. Um, okay, motion that the town council votes to authorize the following change of election polling location for the state primary election to be held on March second, twenty twenty-one, and the special election to be held on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas there exists an unexpected vacancy in the Office of State Representative for the Town of Winter. Whereas the state has issued an election calendar for a special election to fill that vacancy. Whereas the state primary will be held on March second, twenty twenty-one, and the special state election will be held on March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the winter school location is unavailable to be used, unavailable to be used in connection with such special election and primary. Whereas the council has designated the Winter Gymnasium, one fifty-one Pauline Street, for the voting location for precinct one, two, and five. Whereas the council has designated the Robert Delio Senior Center for the voting location for precinct three and six. Whereas the council has designated the O'Connell Hall, ten Golden Drive, for the voting location for precinct four. Whereas the council understands that the following locations are appropriate for such purposes based upon its close location to the existing polling places, handicapped accessibility, and particular physical characteristics. Now, therefore, the Winter Town Council votes as follows. It's hereby declared and designated that voters from precinct one, precinct two, and precinct five will vote at the Winter Gymnasium. Precinct three and precinct six will vote at the Robert Delio Senior Center. Precinct four will vote at the O'Connell Hall for the special state election primary, for the special state primary and special election to fill a vacancy in the Office of State Representative to be held on March second and March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one respectively. And further, the town council directs that the town provide notice by mail to all households with one or more registered voters, and further that the notice be posted to the town's website generally and on the town's clerk's election page.
Okay, great. Uh, that didn't, we didn't vote on that in committee, so that does need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilor LaTerry. Councilor DeMarco?
Uh, very quick, Councilor Agiero, I know what you meant, but, uh, you said, uh, the polling location, the Winter Gymnasium. Do you just want to clarify specifically which gymnasium?
Yeah, we're talking about the gymnasium in between the auditorium and the hockey rink on Pauline Street. Um, that's, yeah, the, the one that's currently being used for, uh, not in the schools.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
Vice President Christopher?
Council Flockhart?
Uh, given the fact that the testing site is now moved inside and is at the gymnasium, is that going to be disassembled? And how long will the testing not be available?
Um, so I can actually answer that, um, Councilor. Uh, excuse me, Vice President. Um, the testing site actually, um, is closed. Uh, they have to move materials around on the weekends as well, um, so they can shut down and, uh, set up pretty easily. Um, so we would anticipate them being closed for one day, um, two days at the most.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Okay, I'm gonna ask the clerk, uh, call the rule for that motion.
Council Agiero?
Yes.
Council Flockhart?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes, sorry.
Council LaTerry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council LaConti?
Yes.
Council Freeno?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory? Thank you.
Okay, um, before we start new business, I'm going to ask Denise to, uh, read the phone number for public comments. Um, I didn't read that off at the beginning of the meeting and I wanted to see if it was possible for us to give that out for people to call in for public comment. Denise, do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do. Uh, for people to call, it's three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And the ID number is eight one zero, nine two three four, two one zero three.
Okay, great, and we can give that out right before public comment as well, but I wanted to give that out to people. Okay, so on to new business. Um, the national grid or, uh, requests that we heard in public hearings at the beginning of the meeting, um, the ones from Madison Ave, Bowden Street, and Winter Street, I'm going to refer that to the Committee on Public Safety. Um, so if, uh, Council Flockhart, if you could take up a meeting, uh, to review those, um, and probably what we would want to coordinate with, um, Director Cala as well on those, um, that would be great. Okay, uh, no comments on that? Okay, I'm gonna make that referral. Okay, uh, winter zoning map update memo, winter planning board. Um, this was a memo that came to us from the planning board about, um, a townwide winter zoning map. Um, they have requested that the town, uh, look into clarifying the existing zoning map. They provided us another, uh, council packet with a, an example of the, the current zoning map, which was drafted in two thousand and six. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I think it's proven that there are definitely some ambiguities in it. Um, so the planning board has asked us to try to make those clarifications and they've listed a bunch of, um, elements of things that they think that the map should be included in. Um, would anyone like to make a comment about the, the planning board memo? Okay, seeing none. Um, I think the best way to act on this, I, I personally think that this is something that, uh, is a, a, a valid concern and is something that the town should take action on. There is a ton of ambiguity on the, um, on the current zoning map. So I don't have a motion right now, but I think it would be good if we maybe started thinking about how, what this process would look like and, uh, how much it would cost to get this done, uh, similar to how we did this a, uh, a year and a half ago with the Center Business District map. Um, I think that all areas of the town, um, probably deserve and need the same type of clarity that we now have in the Center Business District. So if we could maybe start that process of just looking into this, I think that would be a good step forward.
Uh, we will gladly look into that. Um, I will have, uh, Rachel Kelly start doing some work on that. Thanks.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, French Square Parking Lot Overnight slash Emergency Parking. Councilor LaTerry, you asked for this to be put on the agenda?
Yeah, since we have, um, you know, it's a new temporary lot there and, uh, I think we need to treat it like other municipal lots, uh, in town. And I talked to Director Cala about this, um, a few weeks back and especially with snow and such now, thought it should be put on the agenda because we really have no guidance in terms of how, you know, we have a snow emergency, people could park down there and there's really no restriction for them to, to leave right now. Um, so I think this, this is something that needs to be taken up relatively quickly, obviously not tonight, but if Director Cala could maybe, uh, help me out with discussing what we're looking for here, or what I'm looking for.
Sure, uh, the, the discussion, Councilor, that, uh, you're referring to was, uh, basically related to, to, uh, designated parking for snow emergencies. So, so currently, uh, other municipal lots, um, where the ordinance reads is that, uh, if a storm ends during daylight hours, um, the vehicles, uh, you know, are, are supposed to start working to get their, their cars out, you know, basically immediately upon, uh, uh, the, the snow stopping. Uh, if, if it's an overnight storm, they, um, a, and again, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but they're, they're allowed so many hours, uh, of daylight to get their cars out. So I think what, uh, Councilor, uh, LaTerry and I discussed was while this parking lot is still in a, you know, in place, uh, throughout the remainder of this winter, to give it the same regulations as other municipal lots. Um, again, this, this law, we don't anticipate this lot being, uh, still active next winter. So it's really just a temporary order for the, uh, the remainder of this winter.
Yeah, the, the previous snowstorm we had back, uh, you know, five, six weeks ago, whenever it was, uh, seven weeks ago, yeah, you know, there was, we had lifted the parking ban, however, there were cars in there that hadn't moved, uh, with snow all around them. DPW couldn't get in there to plow. And it's, uh, it's a really needed necessity. Uh, it's obviously been used, uh, very frequently by a lot of, uh, town people. So it makes it difficult if there's no rule really forcing people to, to make sure they get their car out in a timely manner. So I think like the director said, it would be good, even if it's a temporary ordinance, just to maintain the same restrictions we have with other municipal lots and, and snow emergency spaces.
Okay.
You might want to just send it to rules or ordinance, rules and ordinance.
Yeah, so does anyone else, would anyone else like to comment on the issue? Okay, um, seeing no one, uh, Council Flockhart, I see you hand is up. Did you have anything to add or was that just left up? Okay. Um, so I will just refer that to the Rules and Ordinances Committee. Okay. Um, so resolution urging full, fair and full employment opportunities at Amazon. This was an item, uh, brought to the council by President Boncory. Um, since he's not here to talk about it, I, um, unless anyone has anything that they'd like to add about it, I will send this to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances as well. Okay, seeing no comment, um, town council authorized thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the use of retained earnings, water sewer fund. Um, and I will send that to the Committee on Finance. Um, is there any, uh, anything that someone would like to say about that? Okay, seeing none, we will now move into, uh, public comment. And if Denise, if you wouldn't mind just reading that rough one more time before we get into public comment, that would be great.
Sure, no problem. The number is three zero one, seven one five, eight five nine two. And the meeting ID number is eight one zero, nine two three four, two one zero three.
Okay, if anyone would like to comment, they can do so by, uh, using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine on your telephone if you're connected by phone. Okay.
You have, uh, one hand up with the caller with the last four digits, zero, five, one, two.
Okay.
You can hit star six and unmute your phone caller.
I think you just need to hit star six to unmute.
Okay, uh, Michael Demento, precinct two. Do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'd like to talk about the, uh, two thousand twenty-one parking sticker program. And that those that have paid for the, uh, parking permit for two thousand twenty-one, um, all the other cars and vehicles in the town that haven't paid for that sticker should be ticketed. And in regards to the middle school, that site should be the two and a half stories. Um, as all the other businesses and, you know, residents around the CBD. And there shouldn't be any buffer zone or footage requirement for that zone. That, that site should be developed, yes, but it shouldn't be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Wendy Millar?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I have a couple of quick questions. Um, I'm one of those crazy people who takes notes of town council meetings so that I can reference them when people have questions or I have a question. I'm interested to know how we went from three hundred K in a potential shortage with our contract capital from last meeting to four hundred K this meeting. That's a big jump for me. Um, additionally, will you be having any public meetings or discussions regarding potential trash fees? Because people are already slightly in an uproar just at the thought of it. So before it goes into play, I would hope that we would have an opportunity for some public comment, um, once we get a little bit more information. Um, as far as the middle school and the CBD and the rezoning, when is that next meeting? I'm hearing there's a meeting next week. Um, can we get a date on that and is that going to be available for public as well? Uh, yes?
Yes, they're all public meetings.
Okay, I, I just didn't know if that was gonna be, um, out, sent out soon. Um, the questions surrounding the ferry. Um, Karen did put some things out, but part of the ferry question for me is, is there a breakdown yet of, have we received any of the other funding from, let's say Quincy and such that we were hoping to be getting, um, over the year? Did we get that money? Are we going to have any kind of shortfall because of COVID due to that? And what would we do with that shortfall at this point?
Um, I can answer the ferry stuff. Um, no shortfall, um, and Quincy has paid us up, um, to date.
Excellent, excellent. Um, and then in terms, also in terms of trash, um, we were looking at things like Black Earth and the, and those kind of things. Um, for the Zero Waste Committee, have they, uh, are they actively working with whoever's looking for the trash information? Is there something else that we can be looking at and again, regionalizing some of these services, my suggestion?
Um, unfortunately, regionalizing the services may not work. Um, I have looked into that. Um, I'm actually working, uh, meeting with the Waste Zero Committee tomorrow morning, um, concerning, um, some future efforts on their part. Um, and I believe they're gonna have an active role in the discussion concerning, um, us, any, uh, solid waste-related fees.
Excellent. Thank you all.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay. Okay, next up, we have Karen Chadas.
Mister Vice President, um, thank you, Mister Town Manager, for answering my questions. I do appreciate that. Um, I guess I'm gonna go back to the budget again. I, I heard everything that the CFO, Assistant Town Manager had to say. My concern is the budget. Um, I understand revenue and I understand expenditures. And I think anybody that runs a hu- household understands that also. We know that Parks and Rec is in the red already. Not to their fault, please. I don't want anybody to think that I'm blaming Parks and Rec. It's just because of the time that we're living in right now. And as far as the ferry is concerned, I can't understand how they could possibly, possibly be coming out, not in the red this year, but you know what? I haven't seen any figures. We've asked for them. I have never seen them. I'm looking at individual budgets. I want to know if a budget, a town department is already encumbered more than what they have. What is gonna be done about that? Now, there has to be some departments that, um, have to, you know, slow down on certain things. And you know what? We are so fortunate in this town to have the different departments that will do this. They do not, they don't like to do it, but by God, they do it every single year. We ask them to cut back, to slow down, and they do it. And they still get the job done. I don't think we could ask for anything more. I want to know what is going on with the FY twenty-one. We're down twelve and a half percent in revenues. Our ex, I'm sure our expenditures are not down twelve and a half percent. And if they're even equal, I would be absolutely shocked. I think the town has a right to know. And as far as what Wendy just said, you know, I, I understand what she's saying about having public hearings. And as far as what Wendy just said, you know, I, I understand what she's saying about having public hearings. If we have to have a trash fee, but right now, maybe public hearings, maybe to educate people on how to get rid of their trash, so that we won't have these outstanding bills anymore. We signed a contract last year that was almost four hundred thousand dollars more than what was allocated for that line item, and now we're gonna have to suffer for it. I, I, I really don't have anything else to say. I mean, I think everybody knows how I feel about the budget. We haven't even started a budget for twenty twenty two, and already I think we're in the red to start with.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, uh, any other public comment? I don't see anybody's hand up.
There's no other hands up.
Okay, great. So move on to public relations. There is an immediate, uh, committee openings on the Airport Hazards Committee, the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations in the Planning Board as well. Um, so if you'd like to be a part of any of those committees, please go to the town website, and you can find an application and just send it in. Um, and you, and you will be considered for one of those roles. Again, that's the Airport Hazards, Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, and the Winter Planning Board. Um, also, Boston Logan International Airport, um, environmental date, uh, environmental report, uh, is on the town website. Um, you can see that. I have it right in front of me. Um, but you can go to the town website, and you can get more information about that. Um, does anyone else have any public relations or upcoming events that they'd like to mention? Counselor DeMarco?
I would just like to welcome Rachel Kelly to the party and, uh, glad to have you aboard.
Thank you very much.
Great. Uh, thank you. Anything else? All right, um, so now, uh, the, um, I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session with respect to conduct strategy in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Meeting will return for adjournment only.
We have a roll call to go into executive session?
Yeah.
Uh, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Counselor Jero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Terry?
Yes.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Counselor Conti?
Yes.
Counselor Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory? Okay.
Okay, so we will now go into executive session.